...of the Green Castle Climate Council, if we could all rise for a pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Melanie, can you call the roll, please?
Yes, Counselor Cohen. Counselor Langdon.
Here.
Counselor Pedro.
Here.
Counselor Carter.
Here.
Counselor Hammett.
Here.
Counselor Murray.
Here.
And Counselor Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Melanie.
Thank you.
I didn't know what was in London down there until he said, "Melanie, what did you call the roll?"
Next item of business is public petitions and comments. If there's anybody in the audience that has an item they'd like to bring before council this evening? Okay, hearing none, we have a number of special requests. The first is a noise ordinance waiver request for DePaul University. Rhonda Hammett, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight. My name is Rhonda Hammett. I am the new Director of Alumni Engagement at DePaul University. I'm here to talk about our Alumni Reunion Weekend. Our reunion weekend is scheduled for June 8th through the 11th, with the bulk of the programming on Friday, June 9th, and Saturday, June 10th. Most of the activities will take place on campus, and we are only requesting the noise ordinance waiver Friday and Saturday evening, because we do have a live band that is scheduled to play from 7:30 to 10:00. That will be Tad Robinson, native son, on Friday, and then a DJ from Bounce House on Saturday. Both evening events are scheduled to end at 10 o'clock, but we wanted to be certain that we had a waiver on file, just in case anything ran long. I do have copies of the tentative schedule and our form that's signed by our Head of Police, Charlene, if anyone needs one, and I'm also happy to answer any questions that you all have at this time.
Any questions?
Thank you for providing the schedule. That is very thorough.
Oh, no problem. Happy to do it.
So where will this occur? On campus? Somewhere on campus.
Yes. The East College Lawn is where it is currently set to take place. We are scheduled to have a tent delivered at this time for the weekend. We're anticipating about 500 people, potentially up to 700, but we're anticipating about five. So that would mean the outdoor space would be more ideal for a musical event.
Okay. And the 10 to 12 will let you have a little extra time in case there's encores?
Absolutely. That's what we're looking for, just in case there's an encore or, you know, our alumni are having a really good time.
Yeah. I move we approve.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Cody? Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then we have our usual, it's not as big an issue, because this is kind of in the middle of campus, but, you know, I'm not sure you have very many close neighbors there, but, and then, you know, just point to speakers as appropriate.
Absolutely. We will, we will be very mindful of that.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much. We appreciate you.
The next one, I'll be speaking to you, are two for Main Street Green Castle. As you know, we partner with Main Street for First Fridays, and so this is basically the annual request for First Fridays, and I did send this out to our department heads, Police, Fire, and Public Works. So it's the usual request for Fridays from May through October. Setup starts about 4:00. The event typically starts about 7:00. The goal is to work towards an end at 10:00 on both the Square and Indiana Street, and then, but again, sometimes it goes a little bit longer, and then finish up with cleanup and everything by about 11:00. The other sections that are blocked off are the typical Franklin Street from Jackson to Vine, and Indiana from the alley north of Franklin to Walnut, and then occasionally, particularly if there's a lot of children's activities, Main Street has in the past blocked off the Vine Street and Franklin Street intersection for safety.
I'll make a motion. We approve the Main Street closures and the noise ordinance for the dates presented.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please signify your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next is Tony Robertson, and he is here for the annual DePaul graduation. Welcome back on your annual trip to visit with us.
Thank you. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention how fortunate Green Castle and Putnam County is for our emergency services. I'm living proof of it.
Yep.
So I'm here for, to close the streets temporarily. College students walk across the streets whether they should or shouldn't, but we're going to try to organize them for graduation day between the hours listed there for both practice on Friday and the event on Sunday. Then we have Simpson Street closed. We were, Charlene is working with the Golden Church to close those and work with their folks on Sunday, the day of the event, so I'd be happy to answer any questions. Not as prepared as, and tactful as Rhonda was, but I will do my best.
We're glad you're here, Tony. Yeah. Same as usual, so I'll make the motion.
We do have a smaller class, so we should be much quicker crossing the, crossing the street.
They'll be larger, they'll be larger.
Our goals, we're working very diligently to increase those numbers.
Yes, exactly.
Did you make a motion?
I made a motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye. Thanks, Tony.
Forgive me for not staying. I'm going to get the pole out of my yard now.
Yeah.
It's closed.
See ya.
And we have Elevate Endurance for the, is this the?
Yes.
Dust Bowl? Okay, great. Thank you.
Good evening.
This is Mark O'Leary.
Yep, Mark O'Leary with Elevate Endurance and the event promoter for the Dust Bowl 100 gravel race. So we're going into year three of the race. It starts and ends in eminence, but about 95% of the route comes up through Putnam County and into Putnam County, so primarily along the eastern side of the county and then back down, and we hit Green Castle about mile 60 on the route. So just here tonight to get permission to utilize, so the riders are going to come in on the people pathways or the Vandelia Trail. We have permission from both the Parks Department and Putnam Parks to utilize the trail, and the plan is to bring riders in off of the trail onto East County Road 50 South, which is out by the Dixie Chopper plant there. So really just want to get permission to be able to utilize and send riders down 50 South.
Do they continue on east then on 50 South? From, on the map?
So they'll actually hit, go south on Fillmore Road as well.
South on Fillmore Road, okay.
Yep. And then head back out into the county. So that is Saturday, July 22nd. Riders will come through there anytime between 10:30 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. By that point in the, in the ride, there'll be pretty small groups, so you know, one, two, three riders coming through at a time, so no massive groups coming through, through there.
Where will the group go if they go south on Fillmore Road?
Circles the, circles the sports park and then heads farther south from there.
Okay, okay. Do you, we have traffic control on the state highway?
We will have traffic control all state highways, yep.
Okay, great.
Yep. So we've worked with the Sheriff's Department on that. We've got that lined up, and also have Putnam County Commissioners approval to utilize all the county roads.
You're basically just looking for us for permission on Vandelia, People Pathways, Trail, and 50 South to Fillmore Road?
Correct, yep.
Parks Department's already given permission for Big Walnut.
Yes.
Sports Park.
Yep, yep.
Change of motion?
Just making sure, the request isn't in our packet, right? Or is it?
Was it sent out?
The street closure was, and then he gave us the handout.
Oh, it's in a, it's in a separate, okay.
The next, the next three.
No worries. I just wanted to make sure that we had it on file.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the street closure request for Elevate Endurance.
Street closure, we're not closing it, we're just using it.
Yeah, apologies. Yeah, no closures needed.
What it says on the, on the agenda.
Okay, I'll second that.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
The usual other stuff that we need, like certificate of insurance?
Yeah, and I actually have that here. If I can give that to somebody or I can email it, you want to take it?
Okay, great. Thank you. Hopefully the weather will cooperate for you.
Yeah, it's been good the last two years.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, next we have three from Kinetic Change. Julie Carr, welcome back.
Thank you. And I'm here again for a kinetic change for the same request every year. My first request is for the 5K, which starts at 5:00 p.m., June 10th, and there are a few temporary street closures, just as runners cross, but we aren't asking to close any streets, but just there are three different spots that we've had help making sure it's safe for the runners, and I guess one at a time, or do I lump them all together?
Why don't you go ahead and explain all of them?
Okay. So the 5K is June 10th, 5:00 p.m., and then following the 5K, we moved downtown to South Indiana Street, and we're requesting that again to close the street, and we'll have live music and food, and we're asking also for a noise ordinance request there.
To be clear, is the band expect, is the, your music expected to go till 11:00, and then there's teardown till midnight time? Is that the expectation?
That's, yes.
Okay, just making sure.
That's the same weekend as Alumni Weekend at DePaul.
It is, isn't it?
But Alumni Weekend is going to be on campus, did I understand that?
Mm-hmm.
So they're separate events?
Mm-hmm.
Well, if there's not a- It's also Second Saturday. We've not received an application from the Second Saturday sponsors either yet, so.
Well, if there's not a standard on limitations on how long you can do good things for Green Castle, I move that we approve all three requests.
Thank you very much.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please-
How many years is this now?
This will be our 10th. So if you would like to come and join us, this year's theme is decades, so you can choose your favorite decade, whatever that might be, dress that way, hopefully have some music from that decade, trying to cover a broad range, and you don't have to be a runner. You can come and walk and, or just come join us on Indiana Street.
Might get people in flappers, who knows?
Who knows? That might be fun.
Yeah, it would be.
But, yeah, if people come up with excellent costumes for the run, they can reuse them in the fair parade, because I think the theme for the fair parade is dancing through the decades.
Oh, my goodness.
Oh, really?
Okay.
Get double duty out of it.
Well, we do have prizes for costumes.
You guys always have prizes for costumes.
So we might have some former participants here. So, and if you do participate at mile one, you have the best water managed person there.
And 10 years straight. But nobody's thirsty at the first one, except the dogs. The dogs will stop, and we'll take care of the dogs, and-
No wag your tails, no patted.
Yeah, but Julie, thank you so much. I don't, I know everyone here knows, but the people at home, the proceeds from these events are reinvested in the community. The sand volleyball court, the basketball court with the really great glass backboards, and there's many more, and I know you said there's going to be funds available for other projects, and, I mean, it's just, it's wonderful that you do this for our community.
And we've been very grateful for the support, because most of it has come from just individuals participating in events and their kind donations. And also, while I'm here, February 18th, it might not be a physical form of recreation, but a mental, we are having our fourth annual trivia night, February 18th, at Owl Ridge, at 7:00 p.m., so if you would like to exercise your mind, you could come join us there. Free of charge, free, just come play, have fun. So donations, of course, are always accepted, but I think that's-
Motion and a second. All those who are in favor, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Julie, the only thing we'd ask is if there's alcohol served, get with Lori and all that fun paperwork, and then if you, you know, let the merchants know that the street's going to be closed and, and things of that nature, the usual stuff that we require every year, take care of that.
We'll be happy to do that.
We'll do our usual contract, and then I'll need a certificate of insurance also.
All right, okay. We'll do that.
Okay.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, Julie.
Next, we have department reports. Several of our department heads are here this evening. Greg asked me to report that we are in the market for Aquatic Center staff. We do have a good number of people who will be returning with us this summer, but we're still looking for a few additional folks to join the team, and there's been some additional work on the tribute band that was discussed at the last park board meeting and reported in the paper, and the thought was that that's a pretty late night, and with work scheduled for the next day for most people, that they're going to look to see about maybe doing that on alternate, maybe a weekend evening later in the year, because that's a long day for our staff and, and the community by the time fireworks are done. So, great idea, they're just working on maybe an alternate date that they'll bring forward.
Maybe it might work in a few years when July 4th falls on a weekend.
Yeah, yeah.
Friday, Saturday night or something.
Yeah.
It still makes it for a long day for the staff.
Yeah, it's Tuesday this year.
Yes.
Okay. Mayor's report. Any other questions for department heads before I get started? Okay, department heads are free to go. Thank you. Couple things. The Almond Pond Waterline Project is scheduled to start on or about February 27th. Weather permitting, we'll have a press release out on that next week to help alert people. Work will start at Arlington and Shattillon and proceed north and east along Arlington and Almond Pond Road. Some of the work will be open trench and others where the contractor will be boring the water line in. US 231, expected start date continues to be about April 1st. There will be a public meeting, which is tentatively scheduled for March 22nd, with an estimated start time at 5:30. As soon as those, that's probably about a 95% surety, but again, we'll get out information to the community once that is finalized, and Indot will be providing a press release for the media on that, and that'll allow people to come and ask questions again and things like that. Locust Street, again, probably start about April 1st. The YMCA project, looking to start moving dirt and stripping topsoil on or about March 1st. We're tentatively looking for the ceremonial groundbreaking about April 12th, but I learned this evening that we may have a couple folks that are going to be out of town that weekend, so, or that week, or dealing with the IRS. So is there, if we moved it a week later, does anybody have any conflicts the following week that are major or travel plans or anything like that? Okay. So we're working towards that adventure. Right now, arrangements are being made for utilities, finishing up permits and, and things like that. Still waiting on our land and water conservation grant, but we did get approval to go ahead and engage engineering from the state, so that is in process. We did submit a grant application for community crossings in the amount of $1 million, and because we are now a little less than 10,000 in population, we only have to provide a 25% match, as, whereas previous years we had to provide a 50% match. So we've applied for about $1 million, and the streets that went in on the application are Poplar, Madison to Locust, Madison, Poplar to Franklin, Gardenside, Hammond, Ohio from Locust to Crown, and then we're also working on, we have additional money beyond the grant and the match to do some additional paving projects, so we're currently working on, on those as well as getting the list together for sidewalk, sidewalk projects. Todson Sewer Engineering's continuing, and then I have a Zoom meeting with Christopher Burke and Associates. They're the folks that helped us with the stormwater plan and, and the utility study to start outlining a process to get that ready for your consideration, so, just to get that project going, so. And then we're working on several other things around town. There was also mentioned in tonight's paper about the opioid settlement, and as Eric or maybe Jared reported, we are to receive about $21,000, $22,000 in unrestricted funds. A project right there, and so we kind of put it off pending what they were going to do, so we weren't tearing up, you know, brand new investment, but they're kind of in a holding pattern, so we're just going to move forward.
Okay.
Okay, I don't know. Melanie, do you have any report on Linda's behalf?
I gave everyone a copy of the fund report showing balances as of December 31st, 2022, so if anybody has any questions. It is a nice balance, just a couple things to keep in mind. $14.1 million is the bond money for the Wellness Center, so that's part of that big balance, and it shows on there. And then Fund 454 is the redevelopment center, Wellness Center construction, and that's money that the RDC has designated for the Wellness Center. And then Fund Number 455 is the redevelopment center debt service revenue, and that balance must remain in the account for 17 years. That was part of the agreement.
For how long?
17 years.
It's a debt service reserve, so, for example, if property taxes were delayed or something, we could pull out of that fund, make the bond payment with no penalty.
Which fund is that? Is that 455, did you say?
Yeah, 455.
455, yes.
Long gone by then.
Typically, typically what happens is that money sometimes gets rolled in and pays the last bond payment to exit that account, but we are able to gain interest on it and stuff over time.
So a bit of an escrow in a way.
Right.
When you look at the fund report and you look at TIF, which is 271, that drops to $3,266, 792, and 51 cents, and that's because of the money that's transferred to help pay for the Y and the medical office building, and my understanding is, is from our clerk treasurer, that our best offer came from a financial institution in Lafayette in terms of interest rate and, you know, long-term financial impact. Don't ask me to explain it, but that's why TIF all of a sudden has dropped by quite, quite a large amount. It's to go to that account that has the 13 million plus in it to help pay for the Y.
I think it's important to, I think it's been stated, but before and everything else, but to point out that we're, we've got about half the construction costs, you know, out of the TIF fund, so that's available, so we've, we're not borrowing at all. We're borrowing quite a bit, but we're also paying cash on the barrelhead for about half.
And we, we will bring in close to $4 million during 2023 into the TIF fund, so, which will be available for other, other uses.
Yeah, there was, 4.9 million came in this, this past year, according to this report, so.
I'm sure, as you study this window, be happy answering questions?
I haven't had a chance to study it, but what is our procedure for investing of these funds? funds that we haven't used or will not use in the near future?
Linda does a great job of going out and finding who's paying the highest interest rate. And statutorily, we're limited to either CDs or federally insured accounts. So we can't, you know, invest in the stock market or anything like that. So she follows the statutory limitations. And I know she stopped and was sharing with me that she's going to be, if she hasn't done it already, she may have done it already, but one of the banks has made a pretty nice offer in terms of what they're willing to pay on interest on our funds. And so she's going to move money around. But she regularly checks in with our local financial institutions and see who's paying the best interest rate.
And that interest money goes into the general fund?
No.
Or depending on the fund, what the fund might be?
Yeah, it's allocated across the funds that are invested.
Yep. Okay.
But I'm sure if you have follow-up questions, Linda will be happy to answer.
And Linda is also working on the annual report. And I think that's everything.
So we've got sewage funds, six and a, seven and a half million.
Do we need an emotion on, or just accepted?
No, just so everyone knows kind of where we'll start at the end of the year.
Now, some of these funds that, I don't know if she got them closed out before this or if they'll get closed out in January, but remember there was a resolution in December to close out some of these smaller funds and zero them out as she works towards the new accounting system.
From talking to Linda, the water figures that you're looking at there, Water Operating Fund, Water Improvement, those will go a long way towards trying to keep rates down on the water side of things, that the sewage money is really, really solid right now.
There's more than sewage than there's water, but both of them are very, very healthy.
Well, in sewage, we made the last bond payment on the big bond last year.
Okay.
So that frees up some money in the sewage department for things. But, you know, it's a complicated process and we're working on some improvements. Sherwood Lift Station is scheduled for some improvement. The, there's some other work at the plant. You know, the plant's almost 20 years old now, so we're having to replace some equipment and things.
I inquired about the ARP coronavirus. That's 176. And my understanding from Linda, Bill, and I want you to corroborate it, is that those funds will go a long way towards the work we're doing on Todson and J Mar to bring them into compliance.
We're still in engineering. We're using, because procurement was simpler, we used some of our sewage funds for the engineering side of it. And then when we go out to bid the project, we'll do the construction of the ARP.
So will the, going back to that, so the water project's starting soon here, beginning of this month. When will, does the sewage project, then the Todson Drive sewage project?
It's probably going to follow on a little bit later in the year.
But it's still going to be roughly the same time. And then we can hopefully get some community crossings. There we go. What I couldn't come up to.
Alvin Pond Road is on the long-term community crossings agenda.
It's one you have to hang on to the steering wheel on. But we don't want to do anything until these two projects are done. That's the only place to put those lines. It's a little rubber bet.
I don't see in it here, do we get any casino money?
Is that riverboat?
Yeah, riverboat.
Got to find it.
It's Fund 243.
There you go.
242, pardon me.
All right. Not a whole lot. Well, there's 500, is that 518?
Okay, I missed it.
When you combine the riverboat money with the rainy day fund, you're looking at 1.2 million plus. And those are the two funds where we have our greatest flexibility, according to Linda.
And 258 is the opioid distributing that we've already talked about.
Yeah, I guess we got our first check. One of our first checks.
And there must be a restricted somewhere.
Yeah.
Oh, no, there's no distribution up above. On 256 is opioid distribution, 258 is opioid distribution unrestricted.
So we did get our 2022 checks then.
Is that the amounts that you were quoting that we'd get roughly?
Yeah, it's the exact match.
Okay, so that's the one that's just opioid distribution. That's the restricted one. But we still don't know what we can spend it on and we're waiting for direction. We got the cash, but.
Okay, Mark?
So at the risk of, I hope I don't step on Dave's toes, where are we on getting somebody to do the downtown?
We've got a candidate that we're going to try to interview here shortly.
Okay, because it's, we really need, downtown needs some attention, very much so. So we've got Christmas greenery just laying in the gutter.
Mike Richman, and I'm not trying to throw him under the bus or anything, but he had made contact, because that was part of the arrangement with the company that put those, that they contracted with to put those in. They were supposed to come back out and pick them up. So I'll give Mike a call and find out whether it is. But I know that came up a couple of weeks ago at the Main Street meeting.
All right. Nothing else?
I have three exciting things to talk about. At the park board meeting last week, youth basketball is up and running. They have 135 participants and 14 teams. So they're very pleased. Krista said it's running smoothly and things are going real well there. Also, I'm happy to say, according to Krista, in the Parks Department, we will have a Spark program this summer. She is in the process of interviewing program directors. The reason we didn't have one last year wasn't because of participants, it was because of staffing issues. And we are way ahead of the game now, and we will definitely be having that program and offer it to our youth this summer. So that, I thought was a real upbeat meeting. Also too, they're getting lifeguard applications already, which is wonderful. So hopefully, knock on wood, we are open seven days a week and we are fully staffed and we have, don't have our staffing issues that we had last year. So it's a real upbeat, positive meeting.
I attribute a lot of that to Mr. Williams because the lifeguards love working for him. He's excellent.
He's coming back this year.
He is, and almost everyone on our high school swim team has applied for some positions.
Isn't that fantastic? Look how things change around and turn around in one year. I mean, it's just great.
They think he's great.
It's going to be really good.
And if you don't have your lifeguard certification, we're offering classes. There you go.
Oh, that's great.
We are.
I got a challenge, I got a challenge for you. You know what Spark stands for?
Do we know yet?
Summer.
Summer.
Program.
I'm the father of Spark. Summer Program for Awareness and Recreation for Kids.
Love it.
We spent one whole day in the park coming up with that.
That acronym.
It's good to know that history. And one final thing, just in the second ward, traffic flow. Indianapolis Road and Percy Julian is so much better. Just to make the people at home aware, you can now turn right on red, do it safely. We also have some left turn lane yellow arrows. And oh my goodness, I've heard more from my neighborhood in the last two months than I have probably in the seven years I've been here thanking us for making that change. So we can make some good things happen.
I had to hook in somebody the other day who wouldn't turn it. No.
And we also installed some ADA accessibility signals at that location.
I mean, that intersection is perfect now.
And improvements were made to the traffic controllers at the Kroger's intersection too and Wood Street intersection.
That's great.
All three of those between Wood Street and Kroger.
Stacy, any activity on the security cameras? Can we tell whether those are a deterrent or not?
They're up and running. I mean, I haven't.
Nothing's happened.
They didn't talk about vandalism at the last two park meetings, Eric. They didn't bring it up at all. So my hope is that they are working the way we intended them to. I'm done, Mr. Spark. Let's call you Sparky.
Sparky.
Father Spark.
Come on, things like that stick. Two things. For 10 years, I worked for the West Central Solid Waste District. Now I'm on the Board of Directors. And you all have a report. And I've met with Chief Burgess and took a tour of the fire department. So I have all my council responsibilities taken care of this past month.
Time to give Daryl some more.
Is that it, Sparky?
Sparky.
I did do it.
It's going to stick.
Yeah, I want to thank the mayor for mentioning the opioid money coming to the city. And I hope that it's going to be well resourced. As someone who lost a family member due to overdose, it's close home to me. And I want to remind everyone in the community as well as members of council that carrying naloxone is one of the most important things one can do and being trained in how to do bystander intervention with naloxone. It is no more challenging to learn to do than learning CPR. So please, especially if you have a family member who may be at risk, check it out. And even if you aren't, there's always the possibility that you may encounter a neighbor in distress. And so, yeah, that's all I got to share.
Nothing to report?
Nothing here.
All right, thank you. Next, we have approval of city claims. Dave, I think you've got the claim docket.
I do. Payroll is up this month because we have two regular payrolls in the month and a bonus payroll and some clothing allowances that are in here. So it's a $661,676.96 on payroll. The payroll for pensioners is $18,508.98. It's a light month with both direct payables and with the claims. On direct payables, the one large purchase is monthly, and that's Republic Services at $41,864.50. Total claims, that's over half of it, at $75,478.09. When it comes to accounts payable, only $69,390.70. $2,921.54 for new PCs at the Aquatic Center caught my eye. Co-Alliance, $8,671.56. Distinct Web Design, $19,824. And that's the yearly fee for emails for the entire city. We also have hender shots for $2,273.13. Had a conversation with Chris Jones before we started tonight. Two of the cars involved are from 2012 and 2013 at almost 100,000 miles apiece. And I'm hoping we can eliminate some of the older vehicles just because they're prone to expense. And then the other only large expense is people pathways at $12,000 for the year. With that, I'll make a motion that we approve the salary and claim information tonight.
I'll second Dave's motion.
Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. And my apologies, I skipped the minute, let me make a, before we get to minutes, I skipped, apologize for that. On the police cars, we have finally been able to locate some. So we'll be seeing some information on that. With, we had two that were involved in accidents and couldn't, we received the insurance checks for, but our problem has been just locating vehicles. And, you know, we're, it's getting a little better now, but for a while we were just scrambling. So we will be retiring some of those older vehicles as we move forward, once the new ones arrive.
We have three new ones that will be here soon.
Yeah. And my apologies for skipping over minutes. I entertain a motion to approve the regular session of minutes of January 12th.
I shall move.
I'll second.
We have a motion to second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next, we have old business. We have no old business. Next is new business. First item is contract for services with the Greencastle Button County Development Center. And Chris Sinclair is here to answer any questions. Basically the same contract as we've had in the past.
Hello, and thank you for having me. So I started a couple of years ago sending, creating a summary of what we kind of had done in the last year. So I shared that with Linda, and I hope she got that out to you guys. Wonderful. So I include the entire county and how we serve them, of which Greencastle is a very important part. So a lot of it doesn't pertain directly to this municipality. It's what we're doing across the whole county. But we hit the highlights, so you can see that we've spent a lot of time on a couple of really big projects, including Ready, which is that state grant from ARPA pass-through of the state. And so our region got 20 million, and so our individual community, each county got about 2.6 million that they could spend on county projects. So we've been working really hard to identify projects and get them in with our consulting group and our fiscal agent so that we can get credit for that. So been working a lot on that and then a variety of other things. One thing is the solar project that's going on in the northern part of the county up in Russell Township. Spent a lot of time with that. But a variety of things just locally as well. So if you had any questions for me on that, I'd be happy to answer those. But we did see where the state gives manufacturing readiness grants. And so Metal Forming Industries in Russellville got one and Liberty Industries in Fillmore got one. And so I really encouraged Chiota to apply. So Chiota had applied and was declined, and denied, but then they applied a second time. And with our help, they were able to get the full amount for $200,000 for a new piece of equipment there. And so that was a really big win. And then we helped them with tax abate and admit and everything else. So, and so I am requesting that we re-sign a contract for $55,000, which has been the same as it has been in years past for the past two years. And so at the end of this month, I will be starting my eighth year. So I followed Bill after 20, and so he's been at the mayorship almost eight, he started his eighth year and I'll be starting mine. So we've been here a long time and things are going really well. I'm going to present a project as soon as this is done. And so you'll see that we're hitting the ground running and that we've already got stuff in the hopper for this year as well, so.
So Bennington Road, is that the little stub of the street that runs east of McDonald's down in Cloverdale?
That's correct. That's correct. I don't know where they came up with that name. I don't know. I don't know if that was 911 or what that was, but yeah, that's what they're calling that. But, so that was a privately owned road forever. I mean, it's never been owned by a municipality and it has been in disrepair for a very long time. And so Bob Juddell, when he actually ran the McDonald's, now his sons are doing that, you know, he would put some money towards that just to pave it, but it was never, it was just kind of a Band-Aid. And so the town agreed to take it over, strip it down to the studs and rebuild the whole road. We were able to, with community crossings and then match that with some Ready dollars passed through the county, our county ARPA funds. And so we're able to rebuild that road and that's going to be let this year. So as a gateway to our entire county on 70, a lot of people go through there and stop in there and make comments about it. And so we're really glad that we can.
They're not good ones.
So we're really glad that we can help benefit that. Yeah, so it worked out really well. And a large part because of Jason Hartman and his leadership as the town manager down there as well. Because Bill tried to get it done for years and we finally, it was a perfect storm with some funding.
Just having been around from the beginning of all that land out there through the development center, the 35 acres, we're still farming. And do we have an out in that contract that if some development came along, that's not the most prime real estate out there, I don't think. But do we have an out if a development opportunity?
Yes, we always include that in the contract. So we partner with the airport. So we partner with the airport and redevelopment and us, we all go together because that gives us the biggest bang for our buck. And we just let those bids, redevelopment approved, airport approved, and we approved on, airport approved Monday, and we approved Tuesday. So it will be going back to the same person who has always farmed it. They were high bid, that was the Hodgins Farms. And so they come down there and farm it out. But yes, if there's anything that comes in as a prospective client, as an industrial client, that's really what we market it to, then we would certainly have an out through our contract.
I think some of that goes back to when you were president of the Development Center.
And I believe, weren't you the first president, Dave? Or were you first president, co-president? And so, yeah, he has seen a lot, I'm sure.
It wasn't, and then six weeks later, IBM pulled out of town. Remember it vividly.
Fortunately, they were very generous with us, even in their leaving, so.
Oh, definitely.
With their building and the land and everything else.
Given all that history, I make a motion that we approve the contract for professional services.
Second motion.
We have a motion of second to approve the contract. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to ask one question after.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, I forget to want the vote. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Oh, so it sounds like the shell building that Dixie Chopper's been utilizing for a while may be not being used by them anymore soon.
Sure. So in 2008, the former Economic Development Director decided to put up a shell building right before a recession hit, and we had no idea. And so we worked really hard to market that, and we did get Dixie Chopper in there. They were just basically storing parts. And so even when Dixie Chopper went out of business, their parts department was still active because there were still people that needed their mower serviced. Well, Dixie Chopper didn't really go out of business. They, like behind the scenes, kind of sold their operations. And instead of Jacobs and Mowers and Textron, they moved it over to Rhino Ag and the Alamo Group, which is a huge Fortune 500 company out of Texas. And so they put all their operations over in Gibson County, except for these parts. Well, they realized that Gibson County couldn't make things like Greencastle people could. So they moved one line over here, and so they assembled. And then they moved a second line over here, and so they continued to assemble. And now they are simply out of space, out of parking places, out of everything. They were very highly competitive. They were this close to going to Iowa because the big family owns, has ownership of land there, and they want to own their properties. And so they were very close to going to Iowa. It was a very highly competitive process. And they just kind of off the cuff said, well, that old facility, even though it's not tall enough, it's got plenty of space for us. Got in touch with the rail letter, it was just the perfect combination, they all came together, and so that's correct. They just purchased the facility. End of last year, first of this year, they are, so they're at a 50,000 square foot, that's 123,000 square feet, not quite as high, but lots of space. So they're moving out there, and that's a really great thing to keep them in the community. They are also looking to add on another manufacturing line and bring everything back from Gibson City over here, so that's good. So we will be going before County Council to talk to them at their next council meeting about that. In the meantime, there's somebody who'd purchased it, they were doing tire recycling and that type of thing. Well, he still wants to be active in that business, so we're looking at possibly flipping, and maybe they're coming back. So the potential is to fill that building up as well. And if not, we would be happy to market it. But it seems like every time we get a building, Crown decides to move into it, so we'll see how that works. But we don't know, you know, but anyway, so yes, it's a really good thing. And I think that, I mean, we get requests for information all the time about existing buildings, so I don't think we're going to have any problems if it's available, but we're not sure it is, so.
Good.
Absolutely.
Well, that was great news to Dixie Chopper.
Yes, yes, exactly. And they realize, I mean, this is their birthplace, and so they know that the people here know what they're doing and, you know, have a passion for that, so they kept them here.
Okay.
I have a question.
Kristen's going to stay up there? Go ahead.
While she's here. I read with interest your report, because a lot of this I didn't know.
Oh, good.
So I would like, I'd like to see her come back on a month, on a quarterly basis, maybe, and give us a report of what's going on, and maybe get through Mr. Burnsy, the community, more knowledge about what you do and what's going on.
Sure, absolutely.
Hopefully, there will be things going on. But no, I'd like to, I'd like to hear more from you on a more frequent basis, other than, you know, an annual report.
Sure.
If that would be up to the council.
And we do get to hear from her occasionally when somebody comes for.
Well, that's true, but that's, but just on a regular basis, yeah.
And a lot of what we do is the planting, the tulip bulbs in the fall, so that they come up in the spring. So sometimes it does take a while. But yeah, we'd be happy to come back and talk about that. So that segues great into, so what we're doing now is a new thing, so.
I just.
Absolutely.
We'd like to see your face here more often.
Right.
Kristen, I'll be back in June to report on all the, June or July, to report on all the abatements that council has granted that are still active. So that's part of it, too.
That's part of it, too, but, you know, there's a lot of stuff in here we don't, we don't see.
Yeah.
And I think we got a, we got a dog in the fight here.
Daryl's looking for a little more return on our investment.
Yeah, and that's fine, yeah. And we do it, you just don't get reported, you know, once a year, so, but we'd be happy to come back and talk about it.
Okay. Next item.
Yeah, a motion of second, I don't think you voted, did you?
Yeah, we kind of, I interrupted the vote, so let's go ahead.
Oh, you did, right before?
Well, kind of, but we.
We could do it again.
Aye.
By saying aye.
Aye.
There.
I didn't think.
Next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 2023-1. A resolution declaring economic revitalization area, this is for Heartland Automotive for new equipment. Whereas the Greencastle Common Council, whereas the common council of the city of Greencastle, Indiana, has determined that it would be in the best interest of the citizens of Greencastle, Indiana, if such common council defined and declared a certain area within such city as an economic revitalization area. And whereas IC 6-1.1-12.1-1 to IC 6-1.1-12.1-2.5 defines the procedure for establishing such an economic revitalization area. And whereas the common council desires to make available to persons owning property in such economic revitalization area, the right to deduction from the assessed value of property is defined in IC 6-1.1-12.1-3, and a deduction for manufacturing equipment as defined in IC 6-1.1-12.1-4.5. Now therefore, be it resolved by the common council of the city of Greencastle as follows, that this common council hereby declares by description the boundaries of an area to be declared herein to be an economic revitalization area as follows. There's a legal description for Heartland Automotive, which is commonly known as 300, South Warren Drive. Two, that the above described real estate is deemed by the common council of the city of Greencastle to be an economic revitalization area within the corporate limits of the city of Greencastle, Indiana, which has become obsolete and not lending itself to normal development because of availability of other development ground within the city, which is qualified for tax abatement, and because of cessation or lack of growth in the general area, which is anticipated to lead to the deterioration of the area and continued stagnation of employment within the city of Greencastle if said area is not utilized as an area to promote industrial expansion for the city of Greencastle. Three, that in order to be competitive in retaining and attracting industrial prospects and investment to the city of Greencastle, Indiana, is imperative that such city offer to existing and prospective industries locating in the above described area tax abatement as allowed by law. Four, that the common council now resolves that the above designated area shall be declared an economic revitalization area under the terms and provisions of IC 6-1.1-12.1-2.5. That this resolution shall be published pursuant to the provisions of IC 5-3-1, and a copy of this resolution shall be provided to the county assessor's office for inspection therein. That after due publication, a public hearing shall be held at the time set forth in the public notice defining, or notifying of the passage of this resolution, at which time this common council shall receive and hear all remonstrances and objections, determine whether or not qualifications for an economic revitalization area have been met, and take final action upon this resolution. Passed and resolved by the common council of the city of Greencastle at its regular meeting this ninth day of February 2023 with appropriate signature lines.
Sure. So I'd like to introduce to you Ritzuko. Ritzuko is the operations manager out at Heartland Automotive, and so she and I are working together on this project. They have come before us before when they need new manufacturing equipment put in place. So this is one where, you heard this story before because Chiota did the same thing. Subaru is putting on a brand new line, which is called the Crosstrek. So they find that in America, we like our vehicles bigger because we cover more ground. So they're taking offline a car, which is very successful in Japan, and they're putting on this Crosstrek, so it's kind of an SUV-type vehicle. And so Heartland has, obviously, they're a tier one supplier, there are seven tier one suppliers to Subaru, and Heartland and Chiota are both one of those. But Heartland is putting online this line, and so they make parts for the Crosstrek. And so it's going to be a whole new manufacturing line that's going to take place. They're going to scale up their workforce, so this manufacturing line is going to do some of the menial entry-level jobs, and so their workforce is going to scale up, and they're going to have to be transitory and higher manufacturing. So she has just provided me an SB1, which is not complete, only because we're still working on salaries, which you will certainly have when we ask you to pass this resolution. But tonight, we're just asking you to pass the declaratory resolution that defines this as the economic revitalization area. But they anticipate the cost of the project to put on this entire new manufacturing line just over $4 million, $4,066,000. So currently, they have 330 employees out there. Sometimes that's full-time. There is some temp that needs to be utilized as well, simply because they can't find the workforce. If we could find the workforce, it'd be a lot easier. We hear that story over and over, but they are doing their best in what they can do. They won't be adding any additional jobs because they will be retraining, so they will be shifting, but we will be, we will be retaining a lot of those jobs. So I mean, you know, they don't plan on dropping in workforce at all. But again, for tonight, and that will come in your packet that we will ask you to approve at the next meeting, but for tonight, we're here just asking if you will consider the area as an economic revitalization area to be considered for tax abatement purposes. I don't know if you, if you want any questions from Ritzuko. She'll be back at the next meeting, so you can have more specific questions, but she'd be happy to answer any right now as well.
I just want to say that Heartland's been supportive of the tennis courts and pickleball courts. You'll see a plaque there that they gave us a six-figure gift to help with that. We've always prized companies that are willing to, you know, reinvest in Greencastle.
It's your district, Cody.
Heartland?
Yeah.
That's not on yours?
No, it's the fourth.
That's the fourth?
It's the fourth, up until 10th Street there.
Up until 10th?
Yep.
Help me visualize where this land is in relation to the current building and property. Is it south, west?
Where Heartland's going to put this new manufacturing line, so they're going to take off, it's going to be in their current facility.
Oh, is it? Okay.
And they're, yeah, it's not a new build, it's just within their facility. It's new machinery and equipment, and they're going to take offline this car line, and they're going to put online this whole new SUV line that's just, yeah, that's going to fulfill their needs.
I think probably because of the standard wording that's in here about real property, the, you know, the reference to manufacturing equipment and real property and stuff like that, that's maybe why there's a little confusion, that maybe, we thought maybe there might be a real estate, but it's all going to be a personal property tax.
That's correct. It's all going, yeah, the SB1 is for personal property.
And it'll be all spelled out, the SB1 and all the.
Absolutely.
Next meeting.
Yes.
Entertain a motion.
I'll move for adoption of Resolution 2023-01.
I was looking for the number. Oh, a second.
Motion of second to adopt Resolution 2023-1 as presented. Is there any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
We'll have some signature copies coming around. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Ritzuko. Thank you for.
We'll see you again next month. More specifics.
Next is Resolution 2023-2. A resolution replacing Resolution 2022-5, authorizing the use of credit cards for city officials. Whereas various departments within the city of Greencastle make expenditures such as purchasing gasoline, office supplies, and other operating goods and supplies from numerous vendors, whereas the use of credit cards from one company would reduce the time currently required to process claims to the numerous vendors, freeing city officials to carry out other official duties and expediting the claim process. Now therefore, be it resolved that the common council of the city of Greencastle authorizes the use of credit cards as follows. One, city-approved credit cards may be used to make the following expenditures: office supplies, goods and supplies necessary for the operation of the department, gasoline and automos, supplies and repairs, training expenses, travel expenses, other work-related expenses. No other uses are approved. A list of authorized cardholders and limits is attached as Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein. All employees must comply with all city policies regarding credit card usage. The authorized cardholders may delegate his or her duties and allow a member of his or her department to make purchases with the credit card. However, the official shall be responsible for the actions of his or her employee. The employee must return the card to the official immediately after the employee has made the assigned purchase. This resolution replaces Resolution 2022-5 in its entirety, passed and adopted by the common council of the city of Greencastle, Indiana, this ninth day of February 2023 with appropriate signature lines. Exhibit A reads as follows. Employees authorized to use the city of Greencastle credit cards. William A. Dory Jr., Mayor, $5,000. Linda Dunbar, Clerk-Treasurer, $5,000. Department heads and assistants, Lori Hardwick, $1,000. Melanie Welker, $1,000. Chris Jones, $4,000. Ed Wilson, $1,000. John Burgess, $3,000. Rob Frank, $1,000. Greg Ruark, $2,500. Krista Snellenberger, $1,000. Scott Zimmerman, $1,000. Jason Keeney, $1,000. David Grimes, $1,000. Andrew Rogers, $1,000. Oscar King, $3,000. Ed Phillips, $1,000. Holly Foster, $1,000. Tom Swenson, $1,000. And that total allowance is $34,500. So Melanie, do you have anything you want to share from Linda?
No.
This, a similar resolution was passed last year, and obviously with the new police chief, we, and a couple of other changes in personnel, we have to make that change.
But the amount's the same, or do we increase them a little every year?
I think they're pretty much the same, yeah.
Not that any need to, or perceived need to change them.
Yeah.
Okay. That said, I would move to approve Resolution 2023-2.
Anyone else for a second?
A second.
Motion of second, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Resolution passes. Be sending the signature copy around. Next, our last item of business is outstanding 2020 warrants. Cancellation of warrants, old outstanding checks pursuant to IC 5-11-10.5. All checks outstanding and unpaid for a period of two years as of December 31 of each year shall be declared canceled. Not later than March 1 of each year. Clerk-Treasurer shall prepare a list in duplicate of all checks outstanding for two or more years as of December 31 last proceeding. The original copy shall be filed with the city council, and the duplicate copy maintained by the Clerk-Treasurer of the city of Greencastle. The Clerk-Treasurer shall enter the amounts so listed as a receipt to the fund or funds upon which they were originally drawn, and remove checks from the list of outstanding checks. If the fund from which the check was originally drawn is not in existence or cannot be ascertained, the amount of the outstanding check shall be receded into the general fund. So in the payroll account, 999-102.0000, there's two checks, one to the Marion County Clerk of $70, one to the Putnam County Clerk of $164, for a total amount to the payroll account of $234. To the cash account, account number 999-101.0000, utility refunds, there are a number of checks, one to Benjamin Feist, $82.51, one to Shelby Hoffman, or Huffman, $82.51, one to Ann Harris, $82.51, one to Lisa Deal, $82.51, one to Christie Bervare, $77.99, and one to Andrew Kra. one to Andrew Kraus, $82.51, for a total of $490.54. Also to the cash account, three checks, all of which go to Vectren Energy Delivery, one in the amount of $260.07, one in the amount of $73.40, one in the amount of $374.71, for a total of $708.18. These checks for cancellation are presented to and approved by the common council of the city of Greencastle, Indiana, this ninth day of February 2023, with appropriate signature lines.
I'm curious. Vectren Energy Delivery? They'd come after you if you were.
Right.
Guess it didn't need to be paid.
I'm sure they'll catch up with us eventually.
I mean, these were all in the fall of 2020, so my guess is, is that probably the billing, they were lost or something, and then the billing got doubled up the next month and got paid, so.
They are now-
We've got two clerks, that's child support.
They are now CenterPoint Energy, right?
Right.
So, maybe that was in the transition, given the size of my CenterPoint Energy bills, I'm glad to get $8 back.
The bad thing is not going to you.
That's right.
Does this require a motion to approve?
Yes, I'm looking for a motion to approve, is that a motion?
There's not a resolution number.
That is a motion to approve canceling the, those more than two-year-old outstanding checks.
Okay, Cody, is there a second? We have a motion of second, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, please indicate your approval by saying aye.
Aye.
That passes, the checks will be canceled.
You're up, Daryl.
I believe in the packet, there was also a summary of the bank balances, so that kind of ties in with the year-end fund report, so did Linda send any information on that?
Let me see that real quick. That would be when we reconcile, did the bank record November? So, you can see the difference in totals from there to the fund report I gave you, which is December 31st. So, the balance at the end of November was $61,113.800, or $61,113.801.60, and then we're just a little over $64 million at the end of November, so.
Yeah, this does say November 22nd on there, sorry. Does she need this approved by council or anything, just information?
I think that is just information.
Okay, we, if it does need to be approved, we'll bring it back, but I think it's just-
I don't believe it does.
I'll second Daryl's motion.
There we go.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, is there a second on that matter?
Veronica.
Veronica, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all very much, everybody have a good evening.
Give you a brief history of Sparta.
Don't forget to sign those two sets of papers and send them back this way.